This time I'll call the October 31st, 2019 meeting to order for Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some noise we'll be putting up with today, but as Brad mentioned earlier, it's the sound of progress, and so we'll speak louder if we need to at various times. The first item we have is approval of the agenda. There are two items that will be added to the agenda. First of all, the 2020 law enforcement contract for some of the surrounding towns. And then also, number two will be a drug task force has some vehicles to be declared surplus. And with, I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item we have is the consent agenda. This includes the minutes of October 24th, meeting payroll $281,000, $9.65, the KDOT payment for local match for road safety of
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second. We have the motion and the second, to accept the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to commission comments, committee reports. Ron, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Okay. Craig?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I attended a KDOT meeting in Junction City yesterday, and their new program is moving forward or forward, I guess is the deal. Pipeline, the pipeline that they're gonna have the stuff in, they're gonna do it a little differently. They're gonna take two pipelines, and we want them to be in construction, and we want them to be in the design and stuff. I don't see anything happening. They're supposed to be spending eight million in each county in the next 10 years, which, that is, I think, just on the highway stuff. I don't think it's any local match or any money becoming to us, but I don't, I'm not sure it was petting people's egos and stuff like that. I don't think it really did. I didn't get much out of it. I'm, like I said, I left about an hour and a half. I had other stuff to do. We'll be attending the North Central Regional Planning Commission. We're gonna be talking about immigration, who, what, where, and why. A lot of people know we have a Amish population that's moving up into the north part of our county. There's very few in our county, but the Orange Clay County, they're expecting anywhere from 25 to 30 families to be coming into the area. I do have, didn't try to get any pictures of any people up there, but I did take some pictures of the school they built that's just across the county line and stuff. I came back and took them, you know, night this afternoon. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. I'll just mention, Barb Jones is working on some other things. She's our county clerk, but also is in charge of elections for the county as part of her duties. And she had mentioned earlier that there had been 132 voters that had come in and voted in advance, and there were a few more voters in there actually after that that I saw. So, that's available at the courthouse. She had mailed out 117 ballots, and there's 51 that have responded. And there's still time to send that in. And I, that's really all I have. Are there any public comments that anyone would want to make? And this is the opportunity to make public comments. If there, if it's not something on the agenda, if it's on the agenda, we'll receive your comments when that item comes up on the agenda. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and go to report of county officers. And Brad, if you could give your report, please.
Sure. Received notice earlier this week that our application to KDOT for a local bridge project that we had submitted was not approved. It was not on the list. It doesn't come as any surprise, but if you remember, that's one that we decided that nothing had entered, nothing gained, we'd send it and see what happened. So, we did get the, the dear John learned, said we're sorry we didn't select it, but, you know, keep trying in the future. So, not a big thing. We also didn't necessarily have the money to fund it unless it was funded. So, I guess it's all, it's kind of bittersweet. So... The, Bruce had reported to me earlier this week that he got back the tax assessment, the individual or independent tax assessment on MKC's elevator damage. If you recall on that, they had appealed, MKC had appealed the appraisal value of that elevator. So, we agreed with MKC to hire an independent appraiser to come in that specializes in those types of structures to do that assessment. They paid half of that expense. We would pay half with the understanding that we would agree, that they would agree with whatever that assessment is. Not necessarily to our surprise, but the assessment didn't come in lower than what Bruce had it. And Bruce said that the state is in the process of redefining how those are appraised, because there's not much guidance from the state on how to do it. And the fact that the elevator is no longer used has a big impact on its appraised value. It's not used anymore because they do more trucking out of there and rail services than they do stories in the elevators. So, it will be about an $18,000 impact or property tax from them. So, it's somewhat substantial, but what I think we will probably see is we'll see some of the other elevators coming in, obviously now, doing appeals as well. This will also give Bruce an adjustment and some guidance on how to do them in the future. And so, I guess the good news is we're doing it accurately, and I think MKC feels that's the case. Bad news is it'll be less taxes coming into the county for that. So... Let's see, I'm also working on the bids. I think I'd mentioned to you a while back, Chancey's truck is due to be replaced. It's 13 or 14 years old, and I've got the bids so far from the, from state contract on what it would be. I want to get ahold of Holmes and see if they, like I do always, make sure they have an opportunity and see if they can come close to that. And then, I could, could be as early as next week, come back to you with bids on that for approval. So, the last thing I've got is probably the most troubling. We had, a couple weeks ago, we had a sign that was vandalized, a stop sign. As you're well aware, a year or two ago, we had started a program. It actually started out on Northwest 14th Street in the intersection where we had a number of complaints, where we put up flashing stop signs. And we've had very good reports of that. And to best of my knowledge, we haven't had any reports of near misses or accidents at those intersections since we did that. Knock on the wood. I don't want to jinx that. But we had one of these signs at 2200 and Jeep Road a couple weeks ago that was vandalized and ran over. Somebody intentionally ran over the post and then drove over the sign. Those signs cost right at $1,000 apiece. They are not cheap, but more importantly, they are extremely dangerous when they're not in place. To the point where, and I've mentioned to you in past conversations, our policy has been and continues to be, if we get notification on a weekend holiday or three in the morning, we have a stop sign down in the intersection, we call one of our guys out and they go put it up. Doesn't matter what time today or night it is, or what, what have you. Because we know that becomes an extreme hazard for the traffic, especially if you don't know the area and you drive through a stop sign and we have an accident. This particular case, it was knocked down. It is an intersection where we have had accidents prior to putting these up. One involved a school bus and had a substantial injury to the other driver. So, we take it very seriously. In this case, the sign was vandalized, or in the process of replacing it, we do have to get the stop sign back up. But at this point, I would like to offer, gonna work with Crime Stoppers and add $1,000 to a reward for anyone that provides information at least to arrest or conviction. And maybe that will get somebody's attention if we can find his responsible for that and hold them accountable. So, we have more signs ordered. We're putting them together as soon as we get them and the parts, but I just want to stress how greatly important that is. I provided you in your packet a little fender that we, or flare that we put together that has the information on it, and we'll be publicizing, and I'll provide Kathy a copy of that. And what it is, I don't know whether, you know, this is kids or who it is, but I don't think you have any idea how hazardous that can be turning, when that stop sign is not present. So...
Well, kind of a point of emphasis, and you mentioned this earlier. In this instance, there were evidence where it seemed like it was intentional.
Absolutely.
So, you know, and not that it's, it's less of an offense if someone just drives off the road and happens to take one out or something, but, because I'm sure there's instances where people call in and, or somehow were notified there was an accident and the sign did get knocked down.
Sure.
But in this one, it was, it was something where it was, seems to be vandalism, which is a higher degree.
Yeah, it was obviously intentional. That, that makes it much more troubling. So, it just, I think people need to be aware that that is, does put the public in danger, the traveling public, the next person that comes along and is not familiar with the intersection and drives through and gets hit in the side or hits someone else. So, that can be extremely dangerous. So...
You know, the public safety, but the lawsuit potential, and I mean, just, a lot of troubling things where this can be avoided or corrected, or leaving it in place takes care of it.
Yeah, we did have, you know, I had mentioned to you in the work session a number of years ago, we had a lawsuit that came about against the county over an intersection that didn't have a sign, and resulted in a fatality. And so, the evidence is there. It can be very dangerous. So, we want to minimize that as best we can. And somebody out there knows who did it. So, maybe we can get them to call Crime Stoppers and, and report that anonymously.
And I think, it's not gonna take a vote, but as far as affirmation, I think as a commission, we are in favor of doing this on Crime Stoppers and working with them. So, I appreciate your suggestion on that.
Thank you. That's all I've got today.
Okay. Any other comments? Doug?
I'll share with Brad afterwards. There's some security cameras that may be available that would show exactly when people do those incidences. I'll share with him afterwards so that some of those intersections can be, a security camera can be installed, and so somebody would get a real surprise if they got drunk, knocked over the sign intentionally, did those things there, that lo and behold, there's the camera, and they would be setting in court at a pretty significant expense to them and some potential for jail time because, as Brad said, if you have that, somebody coming up on the intersection who's not familiar with it, doesn't know, and they go through and there now here's a family who's lost a life simply because of that stupidity. And so, I'll share that information with him.
Okay.
We'll see if there's some technology that can help for those highly visible intersections that are being viewed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'll go to notices and communications. We have something from KDHE, and they sent out whatever, some permits are being issued or reissued. And in this particular instance, this is a permit for the city of Chapman. It has to do with the receiving stream, and this is for the Smoky Hill River untreated domestic water. And there's testing that goes with that, and also KDHE is advised. And the city of Chapman has done the proper permitting on that, but we're, we receive notice whenever that takes There is a works the next 25 years, just to save the date, March 31st, April 2nd. This is put on by KDHE and the Kansas Organization of Recyclers for an event that's coming up in March, if any of us are interested. We also received notice on the convention coming up, that the Kansas Association of Counties that we'll be attending. And there's a dinner that we are invited to from one of the engineering firms, Cook, Flats, and Strobel, for us to respond if we would like to attend that dinner. And of course, there's other activities that will take place, and that's at Wichita, Kansas. And, and kind of with that in mind, that particular Thursday, November 14th, I believe it is, we would not have a regular meeting because we'll be in attendance at Wichita at the KAC meeting. So that's it. As far, has anyone else received any notices or communications they'd want to bring forth?
I've got a notice here. I'll let you have it. It's on National School Week, and I'm, I'll just pass to you. I don't think, it's not till March, and I don't think you left one of the schools approach us about it. Lynn, we would probably be doing anything but if one of the schools would happen to approach you.
Okay. And I should have mentioned also that we have received a, a letter from Robin Black, and she sent it to Barbara Jones, but also wanted her to share the documents with the Dixon County Commission. And it's in reference to a nomination that she has prepared on behalf of Heritage Homes and is submitting to the Kansas Preservation Association. And it's for a, so anyway, she's just letting us know the documentation has taken place for a property on Vine Street here in Ambling, Kansas. We'll move on. There's no resolutions. We did have on the agenda, we have two additional items that were added, but on the agenda, we'll first consider a conditional use permit. This is for a new vet clinic, and it's going to be in the north part, or north of Hope. And so, yes, Tim, if you would go ahead and present us the preliminary information on that.
Okay. This will be for a request for a consideration of a conditional use permit for a proposed veterinary clinic at request of Taylor and Kara Green. On October 17th, a public hearing was held by the Dickinson County Planning Commission, at which it was determined through staff findings that the proposed use would be consistent with the county comprehensive plan. No public comments were received by either staff or the planning commission. Both staff and the planning commission are recommending approval with the following conditions. All lighting must be directed within the property lines or otherwise, shielded to prevent infiltration onto adjacent properties. Signs must be no larger than eight square feet. Applicant must abide by all state and federal licensing and medical with, for medical waste disposal guidelines and better, for a veterinary clinic. Applicant must maintain the existing tree buffer on the north side of the structure as utility lines permit, or otherwise install shrubs or a partial privacy fence along the north property line. This use must abide by requirements of the environmental code and environmental services division. The, this includes an annual inspection of the proposed lagoon. Applicant must consult with the environmental services on any other state permits required. Lagoon must be located in an area which will be outside the proposed flood plain. Now, what I included in your packet, the map that you have with the blue on there is the proposed, not adopted yet, flood, where it's gonna be going. And I requested that the applicant kind of move his lagoon over the west of that a little bit more. He knew he invited, and so, that's, that issue, that last condition has been resolved. Well, just to put it on the record that this, we made that as a requirement.
And we have one of the owners of the property here. I don't know if there's anything you want to add, or were there any questions from the commission that they would want to direct to either Tim or Miss Green?
Yeah, I'll address them to Taylor. Can I have large animals on? Are you gonna be keeping them overnight, or that's?
We, if we have something we need to hospitalize, we will.
Okay.
We have a facility for that. We should have a facility built for that. And so, in certain situations, we may.
Right. Well, yeah. I mean, you don't like to, but it may happen that you have to.
Right.
So, I see the, well, the flood plain and stuff like that. Is that gonna cause any trouble with lagoon? Is there anything, Tim?
No, he's, he's moved it away from, because the site plan showed that where it looked like it was gonna be real close to where that was gonna be, and so I requested that he move it back, and so he said that.
So, Tim, is this the revised, I mean, this is where he moved it to? Does this represent, or is it further west of that?
That was submitted to the planning commission, and, but is based on, I was gonna go and do an inspection. I said it is moved to the west.
Further west than what it says on this map. Okay. So...
Is there any restrictions on how far you have to have a lagoon from property lines and Tim?
I know, I think it's, Celine County, it's 50 feet, but I'd have to ask Randy.
Okay.
Randy's been out.
Okay.
So, we've been in touch.
And your following law owners' property around it then all?
Around it, correct.
Okay. I see it, the, you know, the existing tree buffer must be contained. That's nice wording, but who's gonna make, call that out? I mean, it's not your fault, but I mean, what do we have it in for?
You can just leave it there?
Well...
We don't want it removed.
Well, the reason I was saying that is, is utilities permit. We need some, our code requires that because there's a residential property to the north...
Well, what I'm getting at, how do we enforce it?
Well, maintaining it means just keep it there.
Yeah.
Or tear a portion of it down for, because I know he's gotta run utility lines in there.
Yeah, okay.
And then supplement that with maybe a fence or some sort of shrubbery or something to...
But what I'm getting at, how do we enforce it then, though? I mean, I'm not, this is not on you. This is, this is, you know, we put all these rules on there and we go enforce them.
Right. And that would be one of those things that I would check.
Okay.
With a, when I issue my certificate of documents.
But then continuing, though, how do we continue it down the road 10 years?
That would be, well, I mean, it would just, it depends, because a lot of times, those uses, they'll, they'll change hands.
Right.
It might not even be a vet clinic in 20 years.
Or a tree or shrub.
Typically, the next landowner would complain that they hadn't maintained or turned things out, and they'd be glad to check.
Well, and it's, and it's like the lagoons we have, that, you know, they're a good way to do it, but do we go out there and make sure they're maintaining the way they?
Lagoons have to be inspected every year.
Every year. That's what I've got in there.
Yeah, I know, but you have it there, but do we, are we doing it?
Maybe that's Randy does.
Yeah. That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to say thank you for bringing a business into Dickinson County. We're excited about it. I did have a question. I realize you're gonna comply with state and federal regulations, but what is the state and federal regulations on large animal disposal?
On disposal?
Mm-hmm.
I think you have to have, and compost them is one way.
Okay.
The other, well, our way around, I suppose, is we will not take care of any remains. The owner is responsible for any of the remains.
I see.
So, that's what our policy's gonna be.
Okay.
So, we won't have to take care of anything there.
Yeah.
So, they end up taking them to the transfer station that we compost them?
Do you guys?
Yeah.
So, I don't think the rent, you can't, there's no rent or anything anymore, is there?
No.
I think so.
Back in the day, they'd come in, actually pay to take some of them and pick them up.
Yeah.
Nobody does anymore.
Huh.
Back in the day, the coyotes got them.
That's true.
And they hold the bones off too.
There you go. Yeah.
Randy's got one bit out there that they use for composting.
Is that, okay.
Taylor, as Ron said, I appreciate your investment and enthusiasm to have a business here in Dickinson County, and it's a good professional service that, you know, certainly, I think seems to fit maybe what the demand would be and the services offered. So, thank you. We wish you much success. I can't, I think everything's been addressed that needs to be addressed. So, thank you. And then, what we need to do next is go ahead and consider to allow the conditional use permit. And we have a permit that does have the specifications on there that Tim had covered regarding the lighting and the signage, following the guidelines by state and federal licensings that apply, and utility lines and so on. And then, it does say applicant must consult with environmental services on any state permits required. So, that'll be the follow-up on your part. But we do have this conditional use permit, PC-19-6, to certify that Countryside Veterinary Services has been approved as a commercial veterinary clinic at 781 Highway 43, Hope, Kansas. So, we just need a motion to adopt this conditional use permit.
I'll move.
I got it. I got it, Ron. Come on, let me make a motion.
Go ahead.
Gee. I could approve his agenda one of these days.
Okay. So, we have the motion from Craig. Is there a second?
I'll second.
For the conditional use permit. You can tell the enthusiasm of the group that they both wanted to approve this. So, we could say in unison, but procedurally, we have one, one motion, one second. So, any further discussion on permit PC-19-6 for Countryside Veterinary and Services? Okay. All in favor of granting this conditional use permit, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And there's a place to be signed. Also for the zoning administrator to sign this.
Yes. I know this isn't gonna affect you, Tim, but the, we were talking earlier about the Amish community up there, then that'd be more for the assessment, how those buildings are being assessed and stuff. So, my, and Bruce, he's up there, I mean, because they have no water.
Brand copies that's needed later. Yeah. I think there's this place for you to sign.
Yeah, just you and yours.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be interesting. I assume there's, since it's residential or commercial, what?
Yeah. Well, like the one in Tindix County, when I went by there, the motor was running, and I'm sure that must be where they were, their shop is at, but, you know, there's no water, no electricity to it. So, I mean, it's, how do we assess a building that, you know, has no well or electricity to it?
Well, you know, of course...
I mean, it'd be kind of like a, just a farm building.
Yeah. Well, I don't know. You know, there's enough, enough of those type of communities around the state that I'm sure that there's a...
Right.
They have some application for it. But it'd be interesting to hear from Bruce exactly what the application is. So...
Because I, like I said, the one we've got, there's, I've, there's gonna be, I'm not sure how quick it'll be, but here's some other property that's bought up in our county that's gonna be developed or not developed.
I'll ask Bruce and what doctors, it'd be interesting to know.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move on. We have two items that were added, and the 2020 law enforcement contract we have for surrounding communities. Brad, if you'd go ahead and summarize that for us, please.
Yeah, this is the, the contract for the upcoming year for Solomon, Hope, and Enterprise. As you know, the sheriff's department provides law enforcement services for those three communities and has for a number of years. It's my understanding from Garrett that he had increased the price of each one of those by 1%. For Solomon, I'm sorry, for Enterprise and Solomon, the annual cost is $96,663.16. And for the city of Hope, which requires fewer hours, the cost is $28,995.6. So, all the other services and provisions are the same on all three contracts, and they require signature from you all, the sheriff, and then the mayor of those communities. So...
And part of, I guess, implementing this, I mean, obviously, the sheriff department, they cover the entire county as it is, so they kind of establish patterns. So, like, if they're up on Interstate or they're on Old 40, that they spend a certain amount of time in Solomon, and the same going through Enterprise and Hope. And yet, yet they do dedicate certain amounts of time.
Yeah, they're required to spend so many hours a month in that particular community. And of course, obviously, they're required to respond and handle all the calls and school zones and things like that in those communities as well. So...
I'll let you guys go back to that.
Okay. Is there a motion to go ahead and enter this agreement for police protection for Solomon, Enterprise, and Hope?
I'll make that motion.
A second? All second it? Any discussion? All in favor of entering this agreement for 2020 police sheriff protection with those three communities? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's a place for us to sign. We have three copies to sign. And then, as Brad mentioned, this will go back to the sheriff and the mayors of those particular towns. of those particular towns. And this is more of a housekeeping thing to have everything in place. So, when we have the first, come the first of the year, we have this continuation. Okay, the next item we had was to declare some of the drug task force vehicles as surplus. What Brad has handed me, it's a 2014 Volkswagen Jetta, a 2011 Nissan Altima, a 2009 Ford Fusion, a 2017 Nissan Sentra. And we would need to declare these as surplus. And then, these would eventually probably go to Purple Wave.
They would go on Purple Wave, yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, for those surplus property.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Just one quick question, and if you, I mean, some of these are a little bit older and so on. The Nissan isn't quite as old, 2017. Is there, do you know what the idea was on some of this, or?
Well, these are vehicles that have been seized through the asset forfeiture provisions. I know the newest one, the 2017, is going to be a non-highway title because it's been altered in such a way with hidden compartments and such. It'll have to be salvage old. It'll be a salvage title. So, it'll be sold as parts old. It can't be registered or titled in the state anymore.
Okay.
So, but they're the vehicles that were, were taken for violations, and now they can be sold. And the revenue from that going back into their asset forfeiture fund.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? The resolution is number one zero three one one nine. I'll move that we adopt that resolution to declare these as surplus.
Second.
Have the motion, the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I don't believe we have anything else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Have the motion, the second, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.